All right, with that, we can start the public hearing on forty Loring Road amendment to the --
Forty or seventy?
Seventy, I'm sorry, I beg your pardon. Amendment to the, um, to the conditions of approval, um, that the board rendered, um, two years ago. Uh, we've given this about half an hour. Uh, actually, before you start your discussion, if I could just say a few things. We've given this about a half an hour. Before we start, I'd like to read a few things into the record, if I, if I may, concerning our original deliberations concerning the, the, uh, layout of the, of the driveway. Um, in the initial presentation, we received a letter from James Garrity, Chairman of the Roads, Western Roads Trust, um, which stated, "I wish to confirm," he's addressing it to, uh, the property owner of Mr. DeCipio, "I wish to confirm our phone conversation, at which it was my sad duty to inform you that the trustees of the Western Roads Trust have reviewed the request made to the town for a driveway outletting onto Meadowbrook Road, purportedly number nine Meadowbrook Road. As the governing body of the Western Roads Trust, we will not allow a driveway outletting onto Meadowbrook Road where the town building inspector proposes. I do understand that you have achieved all the town approvals for this work, but as the building inspector tells us, he told you any additional access to, onto Meadowbrook Road requires the prior approval of the trustees of the Western Roads Trust. Trustees have denied your approval for the following reasons. One, were this driveway to access a public road, it would not meet the standards established by the town. A, while we are not governed by this, it forms our basis for concluding whether such access is reasonable. Two, it is opposed vehemently by the imbutters. A, as beneficiaries of the trust, their wishes were reasonable are usually respected. Three, in the opinion of the trustees locating it where there presents a safety hazard, A, it would be precluded from the optimal line of sight as it is over the crest of a hill. I know you have yet to come to us for formal or informal approval, so I am acting on information received from neighbors in the town building department. In the event such a driveway was never part of your plans, I apologize for what under those circumstances would be an unnecessary notification. Also, in the event you need to be satisfied as to our right to control this type of issue, I would direct you to the Declaration of Trust on file with the County Registry of Deeds and ought to have been included in the deed for the proposed number nine Meadowbrook Road. Thank you in advance for your attention, attention to this, and remain yours truly, James Garrity III. There's no date on it.
But it was, um, before the construction of the, of the house?
Yes, yes. Then, um, we're just reading excerpts from the draft minutes of June 18th, 2013. The, at the public hearing, um, the, the civil engineer, um, first of all said that he would, um, close off the southern curb cut on Loring Road but keep the northern one, and he said that the proposed Meadowbrook driveway was abandoned. In the decision of the planning board dated August the first, 2013, in the description of the sidewalk discussion, um, the notes say, "Board members expressed concern over the disturbance associated with the construction of a driveway to access Meadowbrook Road. Following a walk along the proposed driveway alignment, board members commented that the disturbance to Meadowbrook, to the Meadowbrook portion of the property was significant and recommended reconfiguring the driveway to utilize the existing curb cuts on Loring Road. Members also expressed concern that the proposed screening of the Meadowbrook driveway was not adequate, it would be difficult to screen effectively." We have received a letter, two letters, actually three letters recently. One from Peter Knight, and actually an email to, to, um, Ann Swain. Uh, he, from, from, Mr. Knight lives at, next door to seventy Loring Road, at seventy-four Loring, um, saying, "Please advise the planning board that Pepper and I have no objection to the Cipio petition to connect our house to Meadowbrook Road. Provided that the Loring Road driveway be permanently closed, we believe that relocation to the driveway will enhance privacy in the neighborhood. We request the natural state of a lot line between seventy and seventy-four, Loring be preserved, i.e. no fences, and that the natural wooded state around the proposed driveway be preserved." Thank you. Then another letter from, to James Garrity, with a copy to us, from Margaret Windsor Stubbs, saying, "Dear, dear Jim, this is to let you know of my concern at the proposed, proposal to create a driveway at nine Meadowbrook Road for the use of seventy Meadowbrook, Loring Road. The proposal is, is for it to intersect Meadowbrook Road opposite my driveway at twelve Meadowbrook Road. Speaking from many years of experience, my own driveway offers very poor visibility for entering Meadowbrook Road. Cars, bicycles, and pedestrians from either direction are hard or impossible to see, and frankly, I don't need any other complications such as an opposing driveway as I try to enter Meadowbrook Road safely. In my opinion, another driveway at that spot would only make a bad situation worse. I hope the Roads Trust will be able to insist on staying with the original plan." And there's, then there's a letter from James Garrity to the planning board, received September fourteenth. "Dear Planning Board, please find enclosed a totally unsolicited letter from Margaret Stubbs, which appears to be in lockstep with those neighbors on Meadowbrook Road to the proposed driveway onto Meadowbrook Road from the, from the proposed nine Meadowbrook. As you know, the Road Trust position is that, given the house's historic access to Loring Road, there is no functional reason as to why access to Meadowbrook should be required. While giving up newly found, wait, excuse me, while ginning up newly found reasons as to why the Meadowbrook Road access would be desirable, the real reason which they have acknowledged is to raise the value of the house. The Road Trust finds it, finds this inadequate cause for the increase in traffic, sightlines, and general safety concerns for the beneficiaries of the Roads Trust. Obviously, there is no friendship for the ultimate occupant, and the benefit for this transient developer owner is only to accelerate his disposal of the property. I understand there is a meeting on this on the fifteenth of this month, which I plan to attend." That's the background. Questions I have are several. First of all, given the, given, given the fact that Meadowbrook Road is a private road, do we have the authority to require a driveway access onto a private road, given the opposition of the Roads Trust, the organization managing the private road? Second, given the planning board's initial findings on the proposed driveway onto Meadowbrook Road, why on earth would the planning board reconsider what it, what just two years ago it had already considered? What compelling reason would the planning board have to, to reverse its decision relative to the driveway access? Those are, those are my questions. Um, if, if there's no, if I find there's no compelling reason, I'm gonna vote to deny it, just based on our previous findings and, and discussions, apart from the fact that I don't, I personally don't doubt that we can even require it, since it's an access onto a private road. So those are, that's, that's where I come out on it.
I'd say well said.
Um, that, with that background, what's the presentation? What's the justification for doing this?
Let me, let me speak for Stephen Greedham. Um, I'm a attorney, I represent the owner. Um, I wanted to, for the record, also note a letter that my office sent, a very lengthy and detailed letter, dated June nineteen, two thousand and fifteen. Uh, the letter should be with the documents of the planning board, by the board of the team. Um, okay, it was sent to Betsy Weir, and it dealt with the question of whether the Western Roads Trust had the legal authority to, uh, actually impose a construction of a driveway from our client's property onto their road. We believe that the answer is they do not, and we set it up in detail in that letter. Um, the letter is not --
There it is. There it is. I'm not gonna be able to read it, it's, it's a quarter of an inch thick.
Here, take a look.
Okay, we, we never got a copy of this, the planning board then.
Okay, well, I, obviously can't speak for former town planner, but, um, we set it the way we assumed we should set it.
I don't think the Roads Trust got it either, but it could be the same.
Okay, so we're gonna need to --
We'll need time.
I mean, that's, that's one of the two questions. And even if you assume that we can, even if, if, even if it's established that we can, if we want to allow a driveway access on the Meadowbrook, and in this location, why would we reverse our, the previous decision?
Okay, we brought our engineer with us, who can set out, um, exactly what we're suggesting be done. We believe that it's a more natural, uh, road than the one that exists at seventy Loring Road currently.
We previously found that not to be the case.
I understand that, um, but we do believe that that's correct. I was not counsel at the time of the original planning board hearing, but my understanding is that at that time, a, uh, traffic study was presented, presented to the planning board, which indicated that there would be no substantial detriment to traffic patterns, there would be no increased danger for a road that debouched onto Meadowbrook Road. My understanding of the timing was, and again, I wasn't here, so I'm just speaking from, somewhat from hearsay, was that the, uh, main issue was, the original proposal was, to put the driveway onto Meadowbrook Road, uh, but that when there was opposition from the Roads Trust, that proposal was withdrawn, and the site plan is approved, was the site plan of seventy Loring Road. My clients believe that the more natural, uh, road, as a matter of fact, would probably be an improvement, um, I believe there would be a drainage improvement amongst other things, is for this road to be cited, excuse me, the driveway to be cited onto Meadowbrook Road, that's why we're here. Obviously, uh, you know, and I don't think it's a, a secret, a Meadowbrook Road address is, um, in Weston, I believe, more --
That has no bearing --
I understand that.
-- on, on our decision whatsoever.
I understand that.
But the, the question I have is, your client didn't stipulate why he was withdrawing the Meadowbrook Road driveway access. He didn't say anything in the presentation about the Roads Trust objection or anything else, he just withdrew it and accepted the planning board's conditions and the site plan that he himself submitted. What has changed?
Um, I --
What has changed substantively?
Substantively, I'd just like to defer to our engineer.
No, I, I mean, I'm asking you, what, what has changed?
Maybe Joe would.
Sure.
So, so, who are you?
I'm Anthony DeCipio, owner. Okay, so what changed was, we felt as if we were being strong-armed into not being allowed to get --
You never said that in the initial hearing.
Well, it, it, we've been before the planning board before, and we've been working on the town multiple years, you guys have gone through three town planners in the past three years, why, nobody knows. However, that has happened.
That is not --
That's not relevant, right. It is, however, you haven't received those letters in which we sent three or four months ago, and as a result of the town planner, we're here today and you have to review that paperwork, correct? So what's changed was, we're just here trying to stand up for ourselves and do the job the way we're supposed to do it. We came before you, you didn't want it, we said, "We can't sit here and keep fighting." We came back to you guys multiple times, on light bulbs, on post-locations, remove one recess light, remove two recess lights, we did all that.
You're asking us for a change.
Yeah, you asked why.
You're as, I know, but you're asking us for, to change our decision, and, and what I'm hearing from you is hostility.
No, 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 there's no hostility at all. No, no, nothing at all.
You sound a little hostile.
No, I'm a little tense, it's been a long day, I have three kids, I was up at five o'clock, it's tough, it's, it's not easy, you know, it's late, you know?
You want us to change our decision. I, we were looking for a compelling reason to do that, that, that a, a litany of, of how difficult it's been to work with the planning board is not a justification for our changing our decision. We felt that we had sufficient reason to, to, to make the decision that we did, and you went on, you agreed with it, but withdrew your, your application.
At the time, I joined as the owner as well, at the time, we left the Loring Road driveway in order to expedite the permitting process, because you guys were going on recess before the summer.
Nobody said that. That's not anywhere in the decision, it's not anywhere in the discussion, you simply said, your, the engineer simply said, "We're withdrawing the Meadowbrook Road driveway access."
What difference would that have made?
Because you withdrew it and you, and you submitted a site plan that showed the Loring Road driveway access, which we accepted. Nobody said anything about summer recess or, it, there were no, there were, there was none of that in the discussion, and, and most of us were sitting on the board at that time.
We were advised at the time, so if you want, in order to get the permit before they go on recess, submit the plans as they are with the Loring Road address, and further up down the road, request a change for relocation of the driveway onto Meadowbrook Road. Did I say, any of you or anybody else, it was, that was someone advised us to do so?
That's hearsay. Sorry, that's hearsay. That was, that was never communicated to us under, in any way.
I didn't say it was, I didn't say that I spoke to anybody on the planning board, it was advised to us by someone, on us.
Okay, so to me, it sounds like that was a reasonable strategy for them to pursue, they wanted to get their building permit right away, so they kept moving on it, and they figured they could come back and, uh, and railroad this thing through.
Not really a request, speak a request, we don't, we don't want a --
Right, okay, well, it kinda sounds like railroading out here, and I'll tell you why. Have you sold that house yet? Okay. Why do you think that is?
Also, reasons, I'm not sure. Yes, people don't like it at all.
Well, do you think you'll sell it much more quickly with the Meadowbrook Road address?
Maybe, maybe not.
Maybe, maybe not. So for that one thing, and I assume that the only reason you want this is so you can sell this property, because you've been carrying it now for how many months?
Well, how's that, right, how's that relevant? So you, so you're, so you're --
Our discussion.
Right. I'm a little bit confused, so is it, is it --
Well, I'm a little bit confused too, you know, but then I'm easily confused.
It sounds like you're looking, you're still looking for rationale.
I'm looking for a reason, and the only reason I can see is they wanna sell this house.
We wanna sell this house, yes. People have come and --
People have said they wanna come to the front, drive to the front.
The driveway just, it's just more compelling from the front. Where's your driveway on your home? I mean, it's simple.
I have to admit that the design, as I went and saw it, um, recently, we all went for a sidewalk, was odd, in that the entire house was oriented in the wrong way, and I think we actually brought that up, as to why the house was oriented in the other direction.
The reason we did that was because --
Because you planned on coming back and getting a different driveway.
The reason why the, the house was planned the way it was, the existing front yard was a flat area of the lot. It required the minimal, minimum, most minimum amount of site work in order to do the septic system and any drainage on the site. If the house was reversed, we would have had to go into the back area where it's more hilly, so more trees would have been required to go down.
On metal.
And there may, may or may not have been ledge found in these curvations. That was the main reason why this house was oriented --
But can I ask a question on this, if I may? May I?
All right, go ahead, just identify.
This is a simple question, and I hope you tell me the truth. If the house was under agreement today, would you be here now?
I don't, I'm not really sure, maybe.
You're not sure?
But how is that, I can't, I can't help, I'm just confused, so why?
Well, the reason it comes up constantly is because the planning board is not responsible for your selling the house, for your maximum profit.
Of course.
So, the planning board is responsible to the town and to the people who live in this town.
We live in this town.
I live in this town.
Right, okay, but you don't necessarily live in this neighborhood. The Meadowbrook Roads Trust has been there for a long time, I mean, we need really, really solid reasons why this would have to be changed. I'm not seeing those reasons, nor, as Al said, uh, am I sure that we even have the authority to do it? You know, if you wanna go to court, you know, and take them to court, I guess that's an issue that we can all do.
And on that, now, I just wanted to add, we had a meeting with the DeCipios, and their attorney, I don't know, when was it, three months ago, I think, and he said, "Have your attorney call me, and I will give you the legal justification for why we think you are obligated to, to embrace," or, "My lawyer called three times, emailed once," I think, and that's in the letter, I think. Never got an answer. That's simply incorrect. No, it's not. Yes, it is. I had one discussion with him.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I don't wanna get into --
No, I agree with you.
It seems to me our decision is, is very simple. Either we find that our original decision complies with our standards and conditions better than this, we stand behind our original decision, or we have a compelling reason to change it. We need a compelling reason to change it.
Well, I can just present what I can present.
We are closing the driveway off of the scenic way, that's one of the reasons, I guess.
Yeah, I would say, in terms of, um, no, Rob Jumper from the Charles City, and as Joe said, this curb cut on Loring Road, which is a scenic way, would be closed, so there's benefit to that. This exit's actually not all that easy to make out of this driveway, when you can handle it, because of the traffic on Loring Road.
We already went through all this, right? What is different than that, from what we looked at two years ago?
Well, I can't say there's anything physically different.
Then why would we, you know, that's, the question is, why would we change our decision if the information is exactly the same as, as what we based our decision on previously?
And the fact of the matter is, there's a lot more disturbance, um, installing a driveway to Meadowbrook Road than there, I mean, you can't even compare the disturbance that's involved in that versus the existing driveway, which was already an existing driveway, which is one of the reasons that we were faking it.
That's what we said out there two years ago, and you accept it.
Plus, plus you have a neighbor across the street who's very upset about the thought of having a driveway there because of the possible danger situation. Um, you have a Roads Trust that's against it, um, and I don't see why, why if the house were reversed, you still couldn't have had the septic in the front of the front yard, so I don't see that's, I just don't see any compelling issue to change our decision at all.
So, if I may be heard, before we are done with this, um, I believe that what my clients were attempting to say was that they never really believed that the Loring Road driveway was the appropriate driveway for this house with this design, that the appropriate driveway was the one they're proposing now that would debauch onto Meadowbrook Road, that the only reason they did what they did was a matter of expediency, which, you know, may or may not be compelling. What is compelling, however, is, if you look at the way this house is set up, a driveway onto Meadowbrook Road works for this house far better than a driveway onto Loring Road. It clearly would make a difference for the people who are gonna live in this house at some point to come onto Meadowbrook Road, which is a very likely travel road, I've certainly driven on it a number of times. It would make it safer for them to actually come in, come out. Loring Road, as I'm sure you know, is a fairly heavily traveled scenic road. Cutting off the Loring Road exit would probably, um, actually positively impact the amount of traffic onto Loring Road, um, and that would make a difference. Uh, allowing the driveway to go onto Meadowbrook Road would not significantly increase traffic. I mean, what we're talking about here is a maximum of, what, two cars, going in and out maybe twice a day, I mean, that's not a significant impact. It would make a difference, it was the, the way that my clients originally designed this, the way that they wanted it to be, and that the way they still want it to be. Um, I think that's compelling enough. Uh, they're really coming back and saying, "Look, this is what we wanted to do at the beginning."
You're digging a hole for your clients, I, I hope you realize that. You're basically saying what, you're, you're reinforcing what Sue Zacharias just said. You actually said it in your opening remark, that your clients just agreed to the other driveway out of expediency. That's, that's what you just said. Well, why would you, why would we, why would that be a compelling reason for us, who assessed the two driveway locations and decided that the Loring Road was better? Why would the fact that your clients agreed to do, to, to the Loring Road driveway out of expediency constitute a compelling reason for us to change our decision?
Because we believe that the original decision was wrong.
All right. Well, it would have appealed.
They could have appealed it or not accepted it.
Because the only reason it makes sense now is if the house is a hundred eighty degrees from where it should be, to make sense for the Loring driveway, but that's the way they wanted to build the house, and we would only approve a driveway where it is.
We suggested rotating the house, we suggested, we talked about that in the, in the original discussion, we actually discussed it.
How could we rotate the house if we couldn't get the --
I don't wanna, I don't wanna get into it, it's built.
You can build the septic where it is, it could be in the front yard, but it --
So there's no rear yard then?
We beat that whole --
So there's a house with no rear yard?
Ten years ago.
So we got to cut trees down, and the rear yard to create a back yard.
You can have a rear yard where the parking port is, but I don't think we need to go there.
That would be a whole, another recalcitation, for a whole nother site approval, and you opted not to do that, you opted as a matter of expediency.
Yeah. So there's a --
I guess getting information to you guys expediently doesn't work either, I guess, because from June to September fourteenth.
What's your point, oh, so point for the June thing?
Well, you're just, that's one of the two issues. And one of the issues is what, is what right we would have to impose a driveway access onto Meadowbrook Road, and so there's a, a legal opinion. My guess is, if you went down that road, you'd probably wind up in some sort of action with the Roads Trust, which you, I, my suggestion is, you really don't wanna do, that, that could be years. Um, so I, I, I think, as far as the board's concerned, we're not concerned with, of legal niceties of what if we can or can't require that, we, we wonder if we can. For, for me, anyway, it's, it's, look, this is a done deal, if there was some, some revelation that, that would make us feel that, you know, we just, that, that our original decision was not well-founded on our standards and criteria, that would be something that we could, we should, we could listen to, but I, I'm just not hearing it. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to comment on this? Somebody?
Yeah, I see.
Oh, yes.
Shaun McGrath, you, Meadowbrook Road, I would be a hundred feet to the left of their, uh, proposed exit on the Meadowbrook Road. And I don't appreciate the, uh, what the commentary is on traffic, so, Loring Road's traffic is gonna have two more cars a day, twice a day, in and out. Great, that's where it is, that's where it was, that's where the driveway cut is. I don't want two more cars driving by my house every day, if I can avoid it, I'll avoid it. I don't understand why shifting the traffic count from Loring to Meadowbrook is any benefit in any way whatsoever, only being a twenty-year resident in the neighborhood. Why, why is that, and to me, I'd push it back to you guys as DeCipio, what's the benefit of Meadowbrook Road, to shift two cars off Loring?
I, I don't think it's a good idea for --
They made a comment that it was a benefit to shift traffic off Loring.
I've heard that, and you doubt it, you know?
I don't know why, I'm just, is there a reason? 'Cause maybe I can get around it.
I'm not sure it's worth, that's a horse that's worth beating.
There's a reason I wanna hear it, I don't know it.
Are you listening to what the planning board's saying?
I am, I'm, I'm looking to try, if there is a good reason, I'll listen.
All right.
Look, if I, if I might ask a question?
Yeah.
Because there, there is something that I am a little confused about, I hope you clarify, is the planning board's position that you believe that, um, in the face of opposition from the Roads Trust, we don't have the legal authority to impose a road on a driveway?
We, it's, no, we, we don't know. We don't have a legal opinion on that, we, we, we have the Road Trust's opinion, and we have your opinion, we haven't read it, but we, we have your opinion in opposition. We're not lawyers. We have to seek, you know, a clarification from the town council to make that, that decision. I don't, I don't think we need to go there personally. Anyone else? In that case, what do we, what's the sense?
Well, I move that we deny this amendment to seventy Loring Road.
You move?
A second.
All right, David?
I.
Right, yeah. You?
Yeah, sure.
I'm sorry, you have to come back for me.